That was it. Okay, good evening to you all and welcome to this work session meeting, which is obviously a little different from our regular council meetings, so we'll dispense with some of the preliminary stuff that we usually do when we open a meeting. Thank you all for being here tonight. This is the last day of November, so in my household, I tell my wife to wait at least until then before we start Christmas, so I guess we can officially start. Our is December the first. With that said, Ms. Gibson, would you call the roll?
Yes, I'm Mayor Marshburn.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tim Behringer.
Here.
Councilmember Dellinger.
Here.
Councilmember Vance.
Here.
Councilmember Singleton.
Here.
And Councilmember Matthews.
Here.
Okay, thank you all, and for those of you who may not know, our council's been busy, really, all afternoon. We were here for a special session and then some training, so they've been with us for a while. Council, thank you all for being here promptly for this meeting. The first item is the adoption of agenda. You have it before you there and are aware of the various items we're going to look at tonight, so I'll entertain a motion for adoption of the agenda.
Moved.
Okay, moved and seconded, I believe, by Mr. Vance. All right, all in favor of the motion, please vote aye.
Aye.
And if there's any opposition, no, and there is none. All right, we'll move right into Item C, and we have several items under discussion reports. In fact, that's mainly what we have here this evening. So, Mr. Treesenberg, I believe you're up first, UDO rewrite, joint work session. Let's see, do we have, yeah, okay, good to see you, sir, and others you may recognize. Go right ahead.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Good to see you tonight.
Good evening.
Marking the, another milestone here with the UDO rewrite process tonight. This will be the fifth of the five scheduled joint work sessions with the Planning Commission, and so we do have a couple of members here tonight. Good to see you all. And so, once again, we have Jay McLeod from Stewart here to give us an overview of this last section of amendments and proposals for the new UDO. Tonight, we'll be discussing parking, revisiting some of the site design regulations, and then also going back to some of the review procedures in districts that were things that we talked about early on but did not carry forward as part of the 160D package, even though most of those introductory chapters had to do with that. These will become the new Articles Four, Five, and Nine that we'll be talking about, but currently, the topics are in the existing Sections Three, Four, and Seven. We also have a brief update on the standard specs that we've been also working on adjusting, which is part of what Chris has been involved with from the engineering standpoint, and so we'll give a little update on that, because we do have, we do have a procedural item for that, that we would like that, once it's ready, to go to the Public Works Committee. So, we'll come back and visit that, but Jay?
Thank you, Mr. Treesenberg, and Mr. McLeod, good to see you again. We're sort of getting to know each other, aren't we?
Yeah, it's great to be back.
Yeah, good to see you. So, go right ahead when you're ready, sir.
I will, thank you. So, good evening, thank you for allowing me to speak with you. My name is Jay McLeod, and I work for Stewart, which is a company who's headquartered at 223 Southwest Street in Raleigh. And this evening, like Jeff mentioned, I want to talk about the changes to site design standards that are proposed, as well as recap some of the zoning district changes and review procedures that are also proposed, and this should help kind of wrap up the whole bundle into a bunch. So, some of these things you've seen before, and some of them are new, and so I'll point that out, the new ones in particular, as we move ahead. But in Article Nine, which deals with site design standards, we have standards for building access, and this will be particularly important on large redevelopments or block-scale redevelopments. We also have stricter standards for pedestrian entrances, and in the TBD, which is the downtown district, currently central business, or currently the downtown district, will be the, the, yeah, the traditional business district, and the Activity Center, which is the AC district, and that's kind of that envisioned as that higher-density, block-scale redevelopment of a tower of seven or 12 stories or whatever. So that would be a big deal if the council ever decides to rezone that, and if someone decides to invest that much money in the town, and so we want to make sure that we have a street facade that's oriented to people and creates an inviting environment. And then, again, standards against cluttering up our major thoroughfares with too many driveways and trying to get homes to access secondary roads. The site design, here's some new standards that were introduced in response to waste collection and site grading. So one of the concerns we heard a lot of was related to tree cover and what construction sites look like as they're transitioning from a forest to a neighborhood, and so we have instituted some site grading standards that kind of complement the existing grading and the buffer standards. They're not particularly restrictive or burdensome, I don't think, but they are a step kind of in the direction of kind of maintaining the topography of the land in a predevelopment, mostly a predevelopment condition. And then we also have waste collection areas, and that, you think about that dumpster courts or areas where you have multiple trashcans, and instituted some standards for when those would be required. This is something we previously brought before you related to the stepping of attached structures, like, for instance, townhomes or long, non-residential structures that would have kind of a stepping effect, to kind of break up that monotony of the roof lines and facades, that front facade. There are also additional standards for multifamily where they butt up against single families, so you have a little bit more compatibility by not allowing a multifamily structure to tower over its single-family neighbor, but kind of, so then you can kind of have that gradual increasing of intensity as you move away from the single-family neighborhoods into the business districts and the more intense multifamily areas. And then also, some standards for creating a presence on the street and the eyes on the street, when you have those larger urban-type multifamily developments, so that you have that interplay between the street and the private space, so that people on those streets feel safe, and it becomes, gets that neighborhood feel. So parking standards, this is kind of the big thrust of the discussion this evening. Overall, the idea has been, for the most part, to maintain a floor, a minimum parking requirement, but also to provide, to lower that a little bit and provide more flexibility for each site, especially for non-residential development, commercial and industrial and so forth, with understanding that those business owners and developers know their trade and their target business, and they will seek to provide the amount of parking that they need in order to be profitable, and that we don't want to unintentionally over-encourage the consumption of land by requiring a very high parking standard, and also with the understanding that, you know, as, as we see the evolution of transportation, and not necessarily that scooters are going to save us from parking spaces, but they have, you know, they're an example of how this is transitioning, and we're quickly, I think, approaching the time of autonomous cars and so forth. Whether or not my father-in-law will ride in them, it's a different story. But, and also recognizing we have higher-intensity areas where there will be more walking, like in the downtown or in that AC district, and we can allow kind of a reduction of parking spaces, because people will walk that, that extra distance, and it's, that's why they're there, is to get that walking experience. We also introduced standards for when electrical vehicle charging would be required in very large parking spots, to kind of help that transition along, too, and provide that access. One thing we discussed extensively in the Steering Committee was the use of garages, and if you're like me, a car rarely gets parked in there. It's mostly full of other stuff that I try and get rid of. So we discussed what that means and how that interacts with making sure that we don't have cars parked over the sidewalk in front of homes, or creating a problem for service vehicles like trash or emergency service vehicles. And so in that, in that respect, for single-family and residential spaces, we've established standards for when and where garage spaces count toward meeting the minimum requirement, and also that we have kind of an open path between the garage to the street because of people's tendencies. This is just kind of a snippet of the parking table, as it's been kind of reworked, and kind of an example of what those look like and how those have been kind of massaged to be more responsive to, to the current conditions. As I said before, the minimum parking requirement was lowered in the understanding for, especially for non-residential, that it will be dictated more by market concerns. The graphics have been updated. Off-street parking requirements table is matched to the table of permitted uses, so that it's a very easy-to-use document in terms of understanding how much parking you need to provide. There is an ability for administrative modification of parking even further, if there's a engineer's parking study accompanying that, so we have built in some administrative flexibility so that people can move their projects along according to the standards that they have and that are justified by an engineer's study. Handicap accessibility is left to the state standards, and there are shared parking standards for complexes where the use fluctuates during, by time of day, and so you don't need to double-park those, you could, they could just share the same parking spot. So, this is kind of just a quick recap of the zoning districts and how those are proposed to change. As a reminder, currently, on the left-hand side are old districts, the number corresponds to the minimum lot size in thousands of square feet. So the R9 district is where the minimum lot size is 9,000 square feet. The new proposed districts kind of flip that a little bit and say, we're going to use the number, for the most part, to talk about density, the density allowable. So in the R9, we have 9,000-square-foot lots, that would correspond to an R4 in the new system, where you would have four homes per acre. And so, the reason that is beneficial is because now we can talk about the gross density of a tract, the allowable gross density, and we still have minimum lot width standards and setbacks to create the character of these neighborhoods and maintain the high quality of the character as you feel it driving through the neighborhood, in terms of the separation of structures and their relationship to the street and each other, but we haven't constrained the developers or the neighborhood creators so much that they can't have sometimes oddly-shaped lots, or sometimes clustered lots, but overall, the density is still the same, and they, they have a little bit more flexibility there, even to create open space or conservation subdivisions, without having to have a separate set of standards for that in its entirety. I mean, we do have standards for what counts as open space and so forth, but my point is you don't need like a different zoning district. And so, this is kind of how those districts lay out. The residential, RA is for residential-agricultural, it's kind of the lower-density district that a lot of places are before they turn into whatever they're going to be next, when they get a sewer line run in front of them, or a, or a street. R2 is kind of that middle, mostly half-acre lots, but two homes per acre, and then R4, as we mentioned. And then, of course, R8 was a response to what has been kind of walking in the door in terms of developer desire, that has been mostly taking the planned-unit development route, in order to get to kind of the flexibility that they needed. This district is being established, but is not being mapped on any property, so it would be at council's discretion to approve a request for rezoning to that, or, or not approve it, depending on the particulars of that case. But it is now a quiver, you know, in the tool, or a tool in the toolbox for the council to be responsive to more urban, more higher-density neighborhoods and requests for that. So, I also want to mention the MF1 and MF2 multifamily districts. The MF1 is intended to be more low-intensity, kind of really transition between single-family neighborhoods to those neighborhood commercial nodes, where it's kind of locally-serving uses. And then the MF2 is more of an urban apartment multifamily district, where you would see apartments that are pulled up to the street, and they have shared parking in the rear, and then like either a garage or just a surface parking, and people walk out their front door, and they're on the sidewalk, and that, that district would be right next to, for instance, an Activity Center district, if it were to, to establish. And so then that allows kind of that, the transition to, to uses, right, the same use, multifamily, but one of them is more neighborhood-scaled, and the other one is more urban, higher-density scaled. And just kind of an example of the single-family flavors and how that plays out in terms of the R4 and R8, a front-loaded, so garage facing the street, R4 would kind of look, you know, in that, generally speaking, what that looks like. The alley-loaded version would be a little bit more, a little bit more dense, and please forgive, I know it's, it actually has the driveway going around all on the side of it, but the idea there being, you kind of see how close the, the neighbors are to each other, and that there's not a driveway and a garage facing the street, so that would be for an alley-loaded kind of look. In reality, the R8 district, if it were ever remapped to an area, would probably be hard to achieve in a front-loaded condition, because you wouldn't be able to get the density you need, because we'd have established standards for minimum lot width, where if the lot gets smaller than that, they have to be alley-loaded. So it'll likely mostly be a alley-loaded development, but there is, you know, flexibility there for the developer, depending on their end game. So, in terms of the non-residential districts, I know there's a lot of kind of crazy arrows here, but on the left-hand side, we have our current districts, the, as you see there, and you can see the arrows kind of show you where they went, how, they've kind of been transitioned to this new, more consolidated, more streamlined version of zoning districts. The Office Institutional and the SB, the Special Business, have been retired, and kind of their uses have been split up into different zoning districts. And if, for those people that go to the Towns website, for the project website, and go to the ESRI map that shows kind of the slider, and you can go between the old zoning districts and the new zoning districts, you will see how that's applied on a case-by-case basis as those O&amp;I and SB districts transition to other districts. But you can kind of see there how the, the industrial-light and industrial-heavy kind of stay the same, but the other districts kind of get a little bit of a facelift and renamed, and, and have kind of now absorbed a couple of the other ones, and so we've got kind of a more simplified, a more simplified zoning district scheme. And again, just kind of to reiterate how that looks on the scale of just the commercial zoning districts, what, what people would think of as commercial zoning districts. Neighborhood commercial is kind of like the things that you might, corner store you might find at the end of your street, if, or, you know, at, at a busy crossroads, but not a real busy crossroads. Commercial mixed-use would be, you know, like White Oak, or one of the more heavy, a grocery center, a grocery store, shopping center. The traditional business district is currently the central business district, and that's the downtown area, a very distinct character. And then the Activity Center, which would not be remapped as part of this process, would be for that big-scale redevelopment or very urban, destination-focused development, dense development. And so, to recap quickly, the changes to the review procedures, particularly conditional zonings and special-use permits, there is, in the table of permitted uses, a list, obviously, of all the permitted uses of land, and then by zoning district, where they're permitted either through special-use permit or permitted by right or disallowed. While you probably will see rezonings to base districts still, I think we're pretty much in agreement that most rezoning requests, probably moving forward, will be the conditional rezoning requests, because it can be tailored very specifically to a site. And so we've kind of worked out some kinks between the requirements for a special use and a conditional zoning, so that we don't have someone coming in for a conditional rezoning, and then having to turn right around and come back to you all again for a special-use permit, kind of in much the very same, much the very same way, except slightly different, but for something that was previously viewed as, you know, okay. So, what we are proposing, though, is to up the threshold for special-use permits from their current standards, and you can see that in the bottom numbers, one, two, and three there, up those thresholds, so that there are fewer of these, because in the current situation, someone can be in a zoning district and have a use that's permitted by right, but if that use trips these thresholds, they have to come back and get a special-use permit. So it sometimes can feel to the applicant like, wait a minute, I thought you said this was okay, and then they have to come back and get an approval. But, the, the overall feeling, I think, in the Steering Committee was that we had those thresholds there in place to deal with developments of a particularly large and impactful nature, and that while, that while that was a necessary threat, a necessary procedure, that perhaps it was okay to up that threshold a little bit, and so that's, that was the thought behind raising these thresholds. Also, the table of permitted uses has been revised a little bit since the last time you see it, to kind of reduce the number of instances where a special-use permit is required, and that was kind of trimmed down based on understanding, a post-160D understanding, but now garner-forward UDO update understanding of, you know, what, what uses will fit well in which districts as part of the legislative process of rezoning that you all would be aware of. So, I do want to obviously provide space to answer any questions you may have, or take any direction you may have to give, but I did want to also kind of circle back to what Jeff had mentioned earlier regarding the Street and Stormwater Design Manual, and I don't know if now's the time for some space for that. So, and then I can, I'll step back up for any questions or direction, if that's okay.
Thanks, Jay. Good evening, council. As you may remember, we had talked about the engineering, Street and Stormwater Manual, as well as the standard details. We wanted to have that initiative kind of go hand-in-hand with the UDO update, since the technical manuals tend to act sort of as a supplement to the UDO, and to make sure that they're aligned, and what makes sense to have in one manual versus the other, that we got that straightened out through the single process. So, we've been working with Stewart over the last several months, and they've gone through a couple iterations, and we've now got street details and, and storm details updated, and they've got, went through a round of comments on a, a new manual. We did not have a Street and Stormwater Manual previously. We've now got a draft manual, and the, the final comments that we've provided from staff level, we provided to them just a few weeks ago, and we're expecting for those comments to be addressed during the month of December, so I think it would be a good idea if maybe that manual and those details were provided, provided to the, maybe the Public Works Committee for review, technical review, so that we can make sure that you all have seen that manual and don't have any questions or comments before we go to the next step with them bringing the public hearing and final adoption of the UDO.
Your suggestion that Public Works, where we go with staff and go through the draft that you have now, to get some feedback?
Yeah, it'd probably be in January.
Okay.
I think Mr. Vance is where I'm at. As far as the council, I think that's reasonable, that's sound.
Council, I'd say, I think we've done something similar that previously.
Yes.
Yeah. Okay, any questions for Chris? Okay. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Johnson. Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Yeah. Go ahead.
Let's go, I got two in particular. One, let's go back to these SUP, the permit thresholds. What you're saying is that someone could come in and build a 495 lot, single-family residential subdivision and there'd be no public hearing on it because it's already signed.
If the property is rezoned appropriately, yes, that is correct, much in the same way that they could currently come in with 195-unit subdivision. Either subdivision, though, would still trigger the traffic impact study that's required to mitigate any negative, potentially negative traffic concerns, and that process stays in place regardless of the special use permit process.
I can support that, but anyway, that's me.
Okay.
That's ridiculous. I'm sorry. Even though it's rezoned, to have 495 houses go behind someone that's, might have been up R20 lot there for 20 years and not have, didn't have the chance to have an impact or comment on it is just ridiculous. I don't care how it's owned. All right, electric chargers, at the very beginning, you mentioned that electric chargers will be required on any parking lots over 100 spaces. Is that residential land business?
Uh, yeah, I think, I believe it is.
I mean, like multifamily, that's what I'm thinking about is multifamily should have, if it's 100 spaces, should have electric chargers available and in commercial development or in whatever it may be. Even, so would this be like for commercial, like a, well, Amazon, it's got well over 100 spaces, they would be required to put in chargers?
Yes, sir. That's the way it's written.
Okay. So it's any development, 100 plus parking spaces?
Right. Now, not like a single-family neighborhood that's 100 homes, that would be, but anything on the same lot, one development.
Yeah, big lots, yes.
Yes, sir.
Got you. Okay. That's good. Thanks. That's better than what we got now, which is nothing.
Right. Let me just, if I may, if you do have any kind of thoughts on the threshold, do you think that they're very, like, they're right on point the way they are or are you like a plus-minus 50, 10? Is it, is, do you have any feeling?
We've got some land zone multifamily that's been that way forever. I mean, for years and years and years, and if people didn't know that they could have 300 units there or less pop up there beside them because let's face it, many people moving here don't know what the land next to them is zoned.
Right.
Don't know and don't care until something like this happens.
Right.
So that's, that's just my concern is that, I just think that's...
Understood.
I mean, that's a good way to have people come in and raise holy cane about something and say, we don't have any input. Why did you allow this to happen? Why does it not have any input? That's just me. Maybe I'm old-fashioned.
I understand your point. Thank you.
Is there a reason for taking that out?
For increasing the thresholds?
Or is it hearings? People have, comes like Gray was talking about.
You mean, it was a reason why we decided to raise the thresholds and that would put the 495 development, 495-unit development out of the realm of the additional public hearing?
No.
Ah. Well, it does kind of hinge on the idea that the real point of action by the council is the legislative rezoning. And I know that councils inherit the rezoning decisions of their predecessors. And some places get rezoned and then the market falls apart and they don't build that thing. And then 10 years later, no one knew and suddenly, you know, your back's up against the wall kind of thing. But I think 160D to some extent has put the impetus of action at the legislative rezoning point. The feeling that we heard from stakeholders in the very initial stages was that this was like double jeopardy, that they were told that the code says we're entitled to this thing, it's by right. And then as soon as they would try and do it, someone would yank the rug out from under them and say, well, actually, you got to go through a quasi-judicial process, which as you all know is, to some extent, a burden. And so that was kind of the thought there. Yep. It was, it was a multiple-step thought, but I understand that there's a concern about the threshold being raised.
And while it is a burden and they have, by zoning, by case law, North Carolina, they're allowed to put it there, the fact that the public doesn't get any input, I think, is an issue. I mean, we, we've got, we had a, one lesson, well, I can't talk about someone that's in front of us now, but anyway, whether it's big or small, it's the way it impacts the neighborhood beside it, where somebody's got to connect to a street and the school's got a roadway and all this. It has an impact that no one ever thought about unless you live there. And for those folks not to have, people want to be heard, even though the impact and what they question is minimal from the standpoint of case law, they still, people want to be heard when you, I just don't like to think that you shut them out and say, oop, sorry, next, you don't have anything to say. That's what the UDS is.
Yeah. The quasi-judicial process is, I think, somewhat difficult for a lot of people to understand because you all have to sit as, you know, judge and jury and there's a lot of specific requirements as to what you can and can't do and who has standing, who doesn't. And I think to the layperson, it can be, feel like they're shut out, even the quasi-judicial process. Now, legislative process is much more accessible and understandable, I think, to most people and residents.
I'll speak to that because I was on the committee and my sentiments were exactly what Gray's are. If it ain't broke, don't fix it. The standard that's there now is good, it works. Forget the 499 unit, what about the, you know, 199 next to the 199? These are cumulative effects that we have that happened to us. So I wasn't in favor of that change coming out of that committee either because I, to speak on the special use permit element, that's one of the things that I wanted to touch on because the quasi-judicial process is opaque, but it's also worded problematically. So under 4.47, under hearings, section C evidentiary hearings, the way it's written in our UDO, it says, it defines who can say what. It says competent evidence does not include the opinions of lay witnesses attesting to property values, implications, traffic impacts, or other matters about which only expert testimony would generally be admissible. However, the state statute, when you read it, clearly says, other witnesses may present competent material and substantial evidence that is not repetitive as allowed by the board. The way our UDO presents it, it sounds like you can't testify unless you have, you're an expert. And that is not the way, so we need to clarify this in our UDO because there is a legal opportunity for neighbors to come here and testify on matters excluding property values, traffic impacts, and some very significant technical things, and they're intimidated by that process. We've seen it. I've seen it. They sit out there, do I need to get sworn in? I don't know what I need to do. It's still a public hearing even though it's quasi-judicial process. So we need to clean that up in our UDO because unfortunately, the statute's cleaner than our UDO is on who can witness or have input in that process. So that was my second, first point on the quasi-judicial, we need to clean that up. The other was on these thresholds, and I like them lower. It's worked in the past. It gives the scrutiny. We're growing so rapidly, seeing these things, the cumulative effects of these things and the public having that access. Gray's right, 500 is a lot. That's a huge neighborhood. And if somebody comes in with 400 and 400, and it goes to my other point about, which is related because of the traffic impact analysis, I'd like to see a provision in there where the planning director or the town engineer can require a traffic impact analysis based on their expert opinion. We had that one developer come in here, they increased the density over there off Auburn-Nightdale Road, so they wouldn't have to do a traffic impact analysis. And it's like, oh, it's below the threshold, sorry, can't, we can't make them do it. We have to have some common sense, the staff has to be able to bring their expertise to bear to say, this is going to have some significant traffic impacts and you're not going to wiggle out of it by just changing your development a little bit. So I think we need to put that in there too and trust a town and not just someone they hire that says, well, this is what the traffic's going to look like. Everybody up here that night saw that that curve was dangerous, this, that, it's, oh, we can't make you do this. Those are my notes. Got a couple more, but I'll let somebody else. Oh, on the multifamily, on the EV charging, I think we do need to revisit that for multifamily and to encourage more. I don't know that we want to mandate more because it is expensive, but we need to find some way to partner either with the county or in the developer and other funding partners to get more EV charging in these multifamily residential areas because as these vehicles become more prominent, the people who can benefit most from the low cost of electric vehicles are sometimes the ones that can't charge them efficiently. And so, and multifamily has a lot of challenges for people, having that be a viable zero-emission transportation option for them. So I think we can look at that again and see if we can encourage it a little bit more, but again, not burden. They're expensive, so we need to figure that piece out too.
In fact, your comment was, is a good lead-in for me because I was going to ask if anybody knows, I guess, that current market or future, how much do these things cost? I guess is how many you put in an area or...
The price of them is, and the used market is continuing to go down and even the new market, they're continuing to go down. So we're looking at over the next five to 10 years, it being something that people can, they're more affordable for folks. And the people who can most benefit from the low maintenance costs, zero fuel costs, sometimes are people who are living in multifamily residential situations too, working-class folks, so.
Okay. The market will change over time, I'm sure. I certainly favor us moving that direction. Okay, council, you've heard from Ms. Singleton and Mr. Dellinger and anybody else? I feel you have anything. Ms. Barringer? Mr. Vance? Okay.
Mr. Mayor, and I know, looking at the permit thresholds, you know, again, they have the right by the zoning and sitting here and saying, well, we want to lower the threshold and have a public hearing, well, we're the ones that got to go through it. But I still think you should let the public have that opportunity because sometimes they'll bring up an item or two that the applicant is asked to add to a condition, which is , and the way it can be done now is to add that condition on the air conditions, and it appeases some of the folks there who have concerns, whether it's extra buffering, whether it's this, where it's that, who knows? But when you don't give them an opportunity, oops, there it goes. I just, I just don't think it's, I just don't think it's a good way. We're supposed to represent people and if there's a 300 house subdivision that's been there 25 years and they're going to put a 500 beside it, they ought to have a voice. Because I think it's pretty obvious by some of the hearings we've had recently, people who are in R12 or R15 don't want R4 or R8 or whatever the new ones may be beside them. I mean, that's what we're hearing. Despite the fact that everyone says Wake County, they should make it as dense as possible everywhere in Wake County. Well, if that's the case, why don't we just let Raleigh Utilities take over one side and care the other and be Raleigh on one side and care on the other and the other towns will go away? I mean, I just, I know you're a planner. I think that's one of the most ridiculous things I've ever heard. Everybody in Wake County's zoned as dense as they can so we can cram as many people in here as we can. Do they realize what they're saying? And in 10 or 15 years, they're going to look back and say, what the heck, what were you thinking? But anyway.
Okay. Just don't beat up on the messenger too hard here.
I'm not beating up on him. I'm just saying that we're being told by people that you should cram as much density as you can and everything nowadays just to get people in here. Is that the way in 20 years you're going to look back and go, what the heck, what were you thinking?
Yeah. 20 years from now, we have a lot more people. I know that. If we keep growing at the rate we're growing, but I hear what you're saying, Gray.
If you don't make it as dense, you won't have quite as many people. Remember that.
Okay. Anybody else come ask questions? Anything?
One last comment, and I think we need to go through again with a fine-tooth comb with the use of the words shall and may, especially with some of these automatic administrative exceptions that we make. I still, I trust our planning department to make some of these discretionary calls and once you say shall, they're going to tailor everything to just go straight to the lowest possible thing they can do. So I think we just need to go through again and look at all those and make sure they're appropriate and also in alignment with 160D, of course, there may be limitations, but I get afraid of the shall. We might as well just make it the policy or the standard if we're going to use the word. You gotta do it.
Yeah. One thing I didn't get to was as far as next steps. One of the things is that we've started getting the quote-unquote "final drafts" from Stuart and so myself and someone that I think Terry has potentially some volunteer review around the Christmas holiday, we'll be going through that and I have that on my list of things to be actively checking on as I read through it from cover to cover. So we should have that, I think, the rest of them by the end of the week, I think, was when we had targeted it or shortly thereafter.
Yeah, the end of the month, this month. I'm sorry, December.
Yeah. Because it's November 30th today. So yeah, we'll have that and we'll put, we'll put them all just as well for anybody still planning commission, council, or on the steering committee who still wants to go through and look at something in particular to just see how it was followed up on. We can put those in a place. I'll put them in a folder and send that around so everybody has access to it. And if you do see anything, then just let me know during this final review time before we start taking it out to the public and we'll...
Jeff, when will this circle back around to us?
So our hope is, is to have our kind of internal staff review done by January and then give Stuart time. It's like, I'll be, I'll be in there making minor corrections just in the, in the live drafts so that I don't have to, you know, bog them down with it. But anything that's more substantive that, or formatting, I'm going to let them finalize that all together in one, one sitting. But then, so we'll give them some time in January to get that done. But then the goal is to have that draft ready to release to the public so that we can have the public hearing in February, which would probably be the second meeting in February at this point.
Okay.
Yeah, and then we'll get, you know, that'll get the process started. Then we've got to go planning commission, and I know planning commission has graciously agreed to entertain a special meeting in addition that month, hopefully in March, so we can take a little more time with it and then perhaps have it back to you in April at some point for adoption.
Okay. Thank you for that timeframe. I wanted to hear that. Okay. Anything else? Okay. We received further information. We appreciate your presentation, Mr. McLeod, and obviously we still have some, some concerns and questions. You guys will work through that as best you can, I'm sure. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item, town manager, maybe assistant manager wanted to talk to us about ARP funding. So this is something we have had some discussions on. I'm sure all of you have seen some of the information that the North Carolina League is putting out and maybe other entities as well, but I've looked at some of that. So, Mr. Manager, I'll let you take the lead.
Excuse me. Yes, we'll all tag team on this. We presented the council with some information a few weeks ago related to the American Rescue Plan Act funding and we put together a document that kind of gave some guidelines of what the town could possibly spend the funds on. Just as a matter of background, excuse me, the town of Garner's direct allocation is going to be over $10 million, just over $10 million because we're a non-entitlement unit. So that means we will get that in two tranches of $5 million each. We've already received the first installment and expect to get the second one in June of 2022. As we've stated before, all of the guidelines for the use of the funds have not been finalized. They're still working on that. We had hoped to get that in September, but it's still not finalized. However, there is some, some information that's been put out by several entities like the league, the school of government, that we've been following pretty closely and we're, so we're kind of using that as just preliminary guidelines of where we could place some of these, these funds. There are also going to be funds transmitted to the state, so those funds are separate from what we're getting here locally. So there'd be some other opportunities to use those funds for different things as they prepare to figure out how they're going to distribute that and spend those dollars. And we also want to try to use the funds we have too to leverage other funds. So, excuse me, and some of... some of the, the suggested uses that we have listed here, that may or may not be the total amount to finish that project, that may just be a part of the funds that we're allocating for that. And I can, I can show you some examples as we go through there. But as far as the, the guidelines that are in place right now, some of the, the uses of the funds pretty much fall into four categories right now. Address COVID, public health, and economic impact, replace lost revenue, premium pay, and infrastructure investments are the main categories right now. You may, as you read different articles about what some other entities may do with the funds they're getting, seems to have more flexibility. Well, one reason is because they may have had revenue loss, and if you could prove that you had revenue loss due to COVID and the impacts of COVID, that amount of replacement funds can be used for various things that don't have as many restrictions as, as us that did not have that much revenue loss. And Garner did not have much revenue loss being in a more affluent county here. The other thing is, some entities may be using money in ways that we cannot because they have qualified census tracts, either more qualified census tracts or larger qualified census tract than we do. We do have a small area of qualified census tract near Mechanical Cloverdale area, very small. So we don't, we don't, we don't have the opportunity to put a lot of money into certain areas of town due to that. Some entities, you could hear about, you know, premium pay for employees. We did not recommend any premium pay right now for employees as part of this expenditure. So that is not in this proposal. This, like I said, this is an early proposal, so it's subject to change. But we did put some items together here, and as you can see, we divided the $10 million up over various programs. There's going to be some programs that we haven't currently, previously been involved with that will give us the opportunity to make investment and maybe to partner with other entities, for example, affordable housing, if we wanted to do something there. We also looked at some of the projects that we already have on the books. You know, is this a way to tackle some of the projects that we have on our perform list, which is our facilities maintenance list, our public facilities maintenance list. And we already know that we want to do some sidewalks and some things like that, close some gaps. There may be some opportunities to use some of the funds for different things like that. But the purpose of this discussion here is to kind of get an idea based on some of the things that we put together in the list here, what is the council kind of leaning toward? Or, you know, what, what priorities may be established from this list? What type of things would you want to try to get into? Are there things that you don't really want us to venture into right now? And the other caveat is, there's still the thought that some of these funds may be less restricted later. Those guidelines have not been finalized yet. There may be some tranches of funds that they will allow to not have as many restrictions. So that could change our list a little bit if, if the restrictions are taken away. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to John and/or Terry to see if they have any comments based on some of the guidelines and information that they've experienced through some of the webinars and other information.
When do y'all anticipate? That's a wild question. Probably got many answers to it that we can, they'll give us more info when we pull. Just hurry up and wait is what you're telling me. We've got $10 million there.
He's heard a more recent update than I have. There's two things, final treasury guidance, as well as there was some action in the, in the, the US Congress, the Senate, I believe, took some action a few weeks back that would have loosened some restrictions. To my knowledge, the House has not taken a similar or matching action. So there could be two different ways in which the, this could, could change. It could be the final treasury guidance, it could be congressional action, and then Terry may have some other things she can add to that.
So the latest I've heard is that a few tweaks to the, the FAQs came out, which was a sign that if they're going to update those, that they would, if they were issuing the final rule, they wouldn't be making updates to the interim rule at this point. So the thought is that we won't get a final rule until 2022. Now, how early in 2022, we don't know. With the infrastructure bill also passing, that's put some more, you know, pressure on the federal agencies who are involved. But maybe the hopeful thing is that Treasury is considering all these comments that they're getting, particularly about some of the difficulties in applying the uniform guidance criteria to everything. So it's, it's a, it's a mixed bag. It's hopeful that they're going to address these comments that they're getting from smaller jurisdictions, and they're taking additional time to do that. On the other hand, it just seems like it just keeps getting delayed with no end in sight. If it gets delayed too long, and a lot of jurisdictions are waiting, the thought is that they will extend the deadline for encumbering the funds, and then the deadline for actually expending the funds.
Can we take those funds like, so we've got $5 million on the first half there. So is that just setting somewhere, or can we do anything with it to grow it, or we're just limited, it's just got to stay there and just, there's no way we can grow that money, I guess is what I'm saying.
My understanding, and I might defer to Mr. Beck on this, is that it can earn interest, but some of that interest under the uniform guidance has to return to the federal government. And so that's another area where they're asking for clarification on. But certainly, some money could be spent now. What they're saying is, if you rely on the interim rule in good faith, they're not going to penalize you later if the rules change. But on the other hand, the school of government and the league are saying, you know, do you want to take that risk? It's easier for the larger jurisdictions who are already entitlement communities and already deal with a lot of these federal regulations for them to step in. They already have the resources in place to do the kinds of bidding and record keeping and auditing that's required for federal monies. So that's why you may see that some jurisdictions are moving ahead with spending money now. Again, they have resources and experience already that most of the jurisdictions, Garner size and smaller, and even some a little bit larger, just don't have at this point, don't have the capacity.
So what we tried to do in the, in the proposal was, first of all, just give you something to react to. But we tried to allocate dollars to things that we feel like, no matter what changes with the guidelines, these uses would still be acceptable. So to Terry's point, you know, we don't think the guidelines are going to get more restrictive on any particular topic. It's unlikely, I believe. Could be some tweaks, but some of these are broad categories that if council, whether it's tonight or in future discussions, if council says, yes, conceptually, we would like some of these dollars to go towards affordable housing in some shape or form, there's work that we as staff can be doing in the meantime, while we're waiting on guidance, to be, you know, getting together information, be presentations from partners like Wake County and others. So there's some things we could keep doing and not just be waiting, you know, without any action. If we, to Mr. Dickerson's point, if, if council gives us some priority categories, we can go ahead and continue doing some work on some of these things. You know, one of the things that we know we can do, anything that's allowable under the Drinking Water Act and the Clean Water Act, we feel pretty confident that those are things that we would still be able to do. So should council say, yes, doing a, a small pipe study with these dollars is something we'd like to talk about, we could at least start getting quotes on those type of things. So there's some work we could be doing once we hear more about council's priorities, whether that's broad category priorities, or whether it's specific things.
So, so as a follow-up to that, John, I was reading something sometime back, and I made a note here, and it's at least a week or two old, I guess, so may not apply. But as a, for instance, I've said here, you know, should we be exploring ways to implement, quote, green strategies? We already talked some about electric stations and those kinds of things, or what about solar panels on housing and those kinds of things? Would, would something like that potentially come under, you know, this federal act that would allow initiatives into those areas if a town wants to explore those and see how that might, both in the current, but certainly in the future, become effective to, to any number of our citizens?
To, to our knowledge, from what we've reviewed so far, we haven't seen anything about green technologies, solar technologies, energy technologies. There could be some things that we haven't seen, or there could be some nuances to that. But many, many of these uses are things that are in response to the COVID pandemic. There are some things like clean water and drinking water that may not be directly related, but it's still helping the general population that might, to some degree, be underserved. So I think that's where we've gotten guidance with those type of things, more so than anything I've seen about energy or energy sustainability.
Would that be water and sewer development, or just strictly water? You said clean water, or are they both wanting the same, I guess?
That, those are the titles of the federal program they fall under. There are ways that you can, there, there's lots of things you can do for clean drinking water. So we have some pockets around Garner that are in our ETJ that we know have, have challenged water systems. So we've heretofore not had really many mechanisms to be able to put in utilities or water to get to them, and almost never is there a way to pay for the actual connections to people's homes. Currently, it looks like both of those things would be allowed. We can't extend water lines to serve new development. So, so new development is, is not something we could do. Updates to systems like sewer systems is allowable. But as everyone knows, Raleigh owns our system, and so if we had dollars that we wanted to put towards an infrastructure project that's a part of Raleigh's system, but in Garner's jurisdiction, you know, I don't know if we would have enough dollars on our own to pay for what's needed. Currently, Raleigh is not putting any of their, their ARP dollars towards sewer or water infrastructure currently. Don't know if that will change. But again, keep in mind, for them, that's an enterprise fund, and it's often, you sometimes don't mingle the enterprise funds with the other funding sources for, for a number of reasons. Raleigh has said that if we had dollars that we wanted to invest in upgrades to our system, as long as they do help existing residents of our system, users of our system, we believe some of the things that might deal with sewer enhancements could be funded. But just installing sewer, a brand new sewer run to a new development subdivision or commercial would not be. Pump station upgrade, for example, might, could be, depending on whether we have the dollars to help with it, or, or what it's, who it served.
Let me, I'll get the council involved here in a minute. Let me ask you one other question, sort of a general question, too. And I assume this, I think this is more of a problem in our rural areas, but the following question I wanted to ask, would these funds allow for attention to be paid for what are often referred to as pockets where internet is not accessible? And obviously, that, that impacts folks. I don't know that that would apply to a town like Garner. You would know better than I, but...
Not so much Garner. I think they are talking about broadband infrastructure in areas where they don't have it at all. I think there's probably too many options here.
Right, okay.
The Wake County area, but...
Well, furthermore, that's one of the catch 22s. We use as an example when we first presented to council, there's a number of things that these funds can be used for from the federal guidance that state law in North Carolina does not allow us to do. And Terry might, may want to elaborate, but currently, unless legislative action happens, broadband in general is one of the things that the federal funds can be used for. But in the state of North Carolina, we're prohibited from using them for that, with, with a couple of little asterisks here and there.
I think the town of Wilson comes to mind as one who's tested this on several occasions.
Regulations, but yes.
With the budget passing, the state legislature has relaxed some of the broadband requirements for counties, but did not extend the same kind of authority to municipalities. So it doesn't appear that broadband is going to be something that Garner can do. But Wake County may take that up in certain areas, and then there may be some opportunities for partnership where Garner spends it in one area in exchange for the county extend, you know, making sure that Garner residents benefit from any broadband expansions.
Okay, all right. Counsel, start with you, Mr. Vance. Questions on this issue?
Yes, for the American Rescue Plan from your review, was it taken into consideration with the current drug situation, opioids, possible using funds to support with opioid problem that we may have within the area?
But there's another, there's other funding that may be available for that. There's been opioid settlement, and primarily through the counties. But the town of Garner has signed on, onto that with Wake County, and that will provide some funds for, to fight the opioid crisis. And Chief Smith is here, so she may be able to talk about that a little bit more. I don't know how much you know off the cuff on the opioid crisis, okay. But there is opioid settlement. Matter of fact, I just signed a document about a week ago. So Wake County will be getting some funds that they could distribute to some of the municipalities to help with program and education for that. But this, this money here in particular, I'm not sure it could be used for that, that type of public health issue.
It would be only if we could show that there was, COVID had a disproportionate impact on people affected by the opioid crisis, which there's probably a nexus there because facilities weren't as open, you know, people weren't going to the emergency room for, for things during the height of COVID. So, but we would have to do, create some kind of study and documentation to show that not only was there a disproportionate impact, but whatever expenditure is designed to alleviate that particular impact.
Similarly, with increase in violence, there are some, some allowable uses for, for programs to help curtail increases in violence that may have occurred during the pandemic. But as, as Ms. Jones said, you have to, to, to make a correlation that the increase in, in gun violence, for example, was caused in part in some way by the pandemic. So that, that's the kind of things that we're not certain yet how we would go about proving, or how we would show that whatever programs are put in place, we directly go to that cause.
We have to have the data to support the issue that we have.
Yeah, and we, we may have some of that data through our police database. But, you know, we haven't made those correlations yet.
Mr. Dellinger?
Yeah, I was, just in reference to the qualified census tracts, you know, I was, earlier I was referencing this blog post by Tyler Mulligan on the UNC government. I don't know if that's changed, but they talk about locally determined eligibility. There's automatic eligibility, which are the qualified census tracts. And then there's a locally determined eligibility, which I want to make sure we're, we can fall into that category. It basically sounds like if you can make the case based on the population that you're serving, sorry, then you can provide that program in a non-qualified census tract area, which would be most of Garner. And we're talking about housing affordability, that would be kind of where we'd want to look. I think from the allocation standpoint, I'd like to see more than the $2 million for going towards the affordable housing affordability, just because I know there are so many entities that can, you can partner with to leverage that money. I know there's the programmatic hurdle we have in the town of not having a lot of experience with a lot of those programs, but that's something we can remedy with educating ourselves, and I don't know, maybe form a committee around housing affordability. But I know that the dollars are out there from, whether they're governmental, other nonprofit foundation. And also, I think when it comes to the affordability issue, what we're, what we're challenged with in Garner is that market has diverged from affordability... we're, what we're challenged with in Garner is that market has diverged from affordability for so long. Affordable and market in Garner were the same, and they've diverged in a way we're not really comprehending yet. And the impacts of that are be, will be significant over time. And so I, I think we need to educate ourselves, but I also think we need to be, um, and I know Ms. Behringer's listened to the county talk about some stuff, and Gray's brought it up, and, um, we need to get ourselves deep into that, um, language, but also have some funds available to do stuff, um, so that we can be very proactive, much more proactive than some of these other municipalities have been. And as far as utilizing the funds, uh, in the fastest way possible, that would be one of the ways we could do it. Um, again, it'd take years still, um, versus infrastructure and, um, figuring out if, uh, and we still need that money, but I mean, as far as first round of money that we can get active and doing stuff with, I think that's one that we could do. Um, so again, the, the, the benefit question on that local determine eligibility, and if you don't think they're getting it more restrictive, and this is kind of what they had kind of outlined before, there may be a broader window for more we can do in Garner. Um, but again, I think the more we put into that, the more we can leverage those dollars two or three times, I think. Um, the last point is that I think we need to set a goal around what, what does housing affordability look like in Garner? It's not going to look like, oh, developers, you can't charge, but whatever. But if we have a certain percentage of new construction in Garner that is going to be permanently affordable, whether it's 10% or 15%, and find ways to work with developers to set aside some of those or work with them, we've got to work with the developers to do it. Can't make them do it, but we can incentivize them to do it. And this money and their, changing our mindset around this, we can help them help us. Because that's, they just want to sell it for the most they can. The consequences for us long-term are very significant. We have generational families in Garner. That's one of the things that makes Garner strong. You can grow up here, go away, come back. Um, we, in our, here, trying to find ways for nurses and teachers and, uh, first responders to stay in town. We have opportunity to make an impact on that, that, and so that, that's kind of where my thing of allocating a little bit more, because we can get more and, and do more for, um, everybody. So that's my two cents.
Okay. Um, Ms. Behringer, anything you want to?
I did join a conversation with Wake County this afternoon about housing affordability and what they're planning on doing or the direction they're moving in. Uh, let me ask a question again. Am I understanding correctly that at the present time, we have 5 million that has in our possession from the, um...
Correct.
Okay.
Yes.
And so the housing, the number by the housing affordability category is 2 million. Think to me that before we can move much further, we need to know what our inventory is and, um, and the affordability analysis study. And we've, we've heard over the years, well, we have this percentage or it's close to that or whatever, but we really don't know what that is yet. And I know that, uh, that, I believe it was Raleigh, this, just a few years ago, Raleigh was maxed out. They, they can't do anymore with affordable housing. But now all of a sudden today, what I heard was they, they have this pot of money that they're applying toward affordable housing. So, um, what does all that mean? And I think that would be covered in, um, and then now, okay, my, my new computer is moving, and I didn't say it could. Um, I think that that would be covered in the affordable housing, uh, now inventory and analysis. And so I would be in favor of doing that.
And that's, a, a couple of the council members were able to join us for, um, a webinar that the League of Municipalities did on affordable housing. And while it wasn't necessarily all the content we might have hoped it would be, I think a couple of things that came out of that. One was an example of, of Town of Apex's study that they've recently completed. Um, it's a very good-looking study. Other communities have had different ones that are different form and different outcomes because they asked for different things, but I think a, a takeaway from tonight, if, if, as the continued, as the conversation continues, but one takeaway from tonight I could envision would be us bringing back examples of some of the types of studies that are being done, and maybe a recommendation to start a discussion about what we would want an outcome from a study to be, because I think that we likely would want some of the same information to come out of it, but I think we also want a little bit different information, because to Mr. Dellinger's point, I think we've got a little bit different analysis to do on our community than some communities do, just because of the history of where we've come from in housing prices. So I, I think it would be similar, yet somewhat different, in the scoping of a, an, an analysis.
Would it be safe to say we're trying to find a definition for, for affordable housing as it relates to Garner? That's what we're saying?
Correct. And there's various definitions, um, affordable housing, housing affordability, workforce housing, subsidized housing, senior housing, um...
Defining it and then setting a goal.
And then one of those terms that gets thrown out is naturally occurring affordable housing. Sounds good, but what's the definition? So if we can get some of those things nailed down, then...
Okay, Ms. Singletary, you want to weigh in on this?
Yeah. And what may be affordable housing in one community in Wake County may be completely different than another community. That's why I, I was, we talked about the Apex, and I mentioned Mr. Dellinger, and I talked during the break that, uh, you know, we used to be bigger than Apex. Now they, you know, their average price, the homes of their prices are 150, 175,000 dollars more than ours. So Garner still has some older housing stock, but with the last refuel, those prices increased quite a bit. Um, looking at the list you have, I'll, I'll start and go over just a few comments. Uh, and I'm on the bottom half right now, infrastructure. I think certainly money to do a stormwater management plan for the small pipe study is definite, uh, that we should do. We've done the big one and doing the small one. I think we all understand needs to be done. Money for capital projects planning, because we've got two parks and a future public works facility, which sounds like a reasonable idea. Uh, the stormwater suggestions also sound reasonable. Uh, and, uh, we're going to have to partner with Raleigh to do some upgrades, because we know they're going to be needed somewhere. Now, we have to talk to Raleigh and get Raleigh's feedback, uh, on that. So that's a, that, that's a partnership. Uh, how much they contribute to it, we don't know. We'll find out when we talk, if we get that opportunity. Uh, I think the HVAC replacement, I'm assuming that many of our older facilities, uh, certainly sounds reasonable, and, and if, whether it's the qualified census tract we have, or if there's other, uh, opportunities to have a larger census tract, as Mr. Dellinger mentioned, I'm certainly open to that. Housing affordability, I think what you suggested, John, is a good way to start, uh, looking at different studies and seeing what we would like to see in a study. Something I've mentioned, I've mentioned to you, and you've said you talked to Ms. Jones about it, and maybe it's not something we can do, but one of the concerns I have is the people who've lived here for many, many years and older houses, uh, not, the homes that are now older, 50, 60, 70 years old, some of our older communities, whether it's School Acres or Cloverdale or, uh, New Rand Road area, uh, I, I've, I've got a copy of a couple of towns where they said they use American Rescue fam, American Rescue Plan funds, uh, to offer assistance on, uh, property tax increases. And there's, you know, all of them have, uh, parameters of, you know, what would qualify for that. I just think it's something we should, we should consider. Uh, that's just me. Again, John City talked to Ms. Jones, and maybe we cannot do that, but then I sit here and read where one town's using that, and it says right here in the article, uh, from October 27th, uh, in Orange County, and that there's something Durham's doing also. Uh, so if you have people who are on a fixed, well, on a fixed income per se, but I mean, who are older and the value of their house has increased dramatically and their tax bill's gone up a thousand dollars or whatever in the last two evaluations, and they can have the opportunity to get 300 or 400 dollars to help, I, I just think we should look after some of the people who are living here and are currently here. If they need some assistance, then I think we should offer that in the program. That's just great. Everybody else may feel differently, but if we're allowed to do that with that money. I know one comment that somebody made in Durham County, they, they set 250,000 dollars aside, and one of the commissioners said, well, we must realize, once we start this, we're going to have to fund this every year. This is not something we're going to do one time. And so, uh, because of the escalating property value, uh, uh, tax rates, taxes here in Garner, abnormal tax rate continuing to increase, so that's just something I'd like to see with this under housing affordability or housing assistance program for residents facing property tax increases, if that's an option. Ms. Jones is going to respond.
So I, I did some research and reached out to the, the league as well, and, um, the existing programs that you referenced, that I looked at, uh, the people who qualify for those have to be low and moderately income based on the, the state and federal standards. Um, there is already a senior-type tax credit program, uh, so, so those could be done. It's not clear that American Rescue funds that Garner's getting can be used. Uh, the belief is that the entitlement communities like Orange County and Durham are using, what's it called, the revenue replacement money, which can be spent on almost anything and are augmenting their existing programs with that. So at this time, it does not appear that a general, um, tax credit or tax relief program could be done. Now, if, again, if you did a study that certain people were going to be foreclosed on because of, due to COVID, they lost income or, um, you know, inability to work, those kinds of things, it's possible that we could tie that, a program could be tied into it, but again, we'd have to have the data upfront, and then we have to track that the expenditures are used to alleviate that. Now, in some jurisdictions, they're making the payments directly to the tax office, so they know that that money is being used for that particular purpose rather than a grant of, say, 300 dollars, and it might be spent on, on anything. So, um, it's not a complete no, but, uh, again, clearly if there are low and moderately income property owners, something could be done for them, yes, under state law, but not necessarily with American Rescue Plan.
I know Wake County has a program, but it's the Wake County taxes, not the Garner taxes. So that's my, my point is that, you know, when you're living, as well, and I live in a town, you get taxed, et cetera, et cetera. So I'll get some more information, see if I can get it to you. I can find some too. I was trying to get it today and couldn't access something because I didn't have my right password to find something, but I'll try to get more information. That's just, I just, if, if there are people out there, again, longtime residents in, in older neighborhoods and need assistance, I just think it's something we should, should have as an option, if we can do it.
Okay. Mr. Matthews, anything?
Most of my stuff is, is still in a hurry-up-and-wait mode. I certainly agree with what Gray's talking about, that the, if there is a way for some of those seniors and what have you, that, uh, we could help them out, or long-term residents, that'd be a, a good expenditure. But again, we got to, with the strings attached to this money, who, who knows what we can and cannot do, you know? I don't want, I'd hate to spend now trying to give it right back to them. So...
So this question is sort of an offshoot of that, and again, it's general, but, uh, could the town use any of its money to assist small businesses that can identify ways they've been hurt by the pandemic, either by almost going out of business or having a hard time, in essence, recharging their business after all of this? I mean, I realize that's sort of a general category, but, um, could we, in essence...
Had some information on that.
Give some grants or something to small businesses that are still struggling as a result of COVID?
I think a couple of things. The, the requirements for proving the impacts based on COVID, and then how to administer the funds equitably, would, would be a pretty large accounting burden and reporting burden on the town. Um, I know there was some efforts by, by, by business folks and nonprofits earlier on in the pandemic that, that worked on that, and they were doing that with funds that had less restriction and reporting requirement. So there could be that that's, you know, a continuation of that program, uh, but, but we can't, we can't give dollars to that program to, to, to go to the business, as I understand it currently. We can only give dollars to nonprofits if the nonprofits are carrying out, um, something that we're legally enabled to do on our behalf. So I don't, I don't think we can make a direct allocation to that to get around any of the reporting requirements. Um, and I think as we currently read it, any of the reporting requirements and the proof requirements would be sort of onerous to do. Not that it couldn't be done, it just, it seemed like the, the challenges far outweighed benefits that might end up getting to the recipients.
Yeah, I suspected as much, but I wanted to ask that question anyway. Okay, I think we've had a chance to go around. Uh, okay, go ahead, Ms. Dellinger.
A little follow-up to Gray's comment, and the broader conversation about affordability comes with the older residents and limited, you know, fixed incomes, and maintenance is always a thing. And I know there have been historically in other parts of the county, weatherization programs, home repair programs, and higher taxes can result in more deferred maintenance. You got to pay your taxes, or you lose your house, or you don't do a repair. Um, so between, you know, maybe a small weatherization program where you're fixing up windows and doing some things, or roof repairs for other deferred maintenance that people can't afford, and it's affecting, um, you know, their quality of life in their older home, those are types of things I think that happen in the context of this, this conversation around affordability, this survey to say, where are some of these, we know where some of these neighborhoods are, where the older housing stock is, um, and seeing if there's a way to, you know, use some funds to help people in a, in another way that isn't directly related to the, the tax bill, but because of the tax bill, they can't maybe fix up something else. So, I don't know, just affordability has a lot of implications on home ownership in particular.
Yeah. And, Mr. Dellinger, before you were on the council, and you may still be aware of it, but, but we do have a partner rebuilding together of the triangle that the town did partner with over a number of years. Um, I don't think this past two budget cycles, we funded them just because there was some, at the time, question about whether they, they could find enough candidates and use the funding the way that council had asked to do it, but we do have an existing funding partner that we could at least investigate. And I feel like, for the most part, I believe council was reasonably satisfied with the, the, the way in which we administered that program. We also lost some staff resources that was the liaison to that program back in the past, but that's definitely a, a, an existing or former partner that we could, that does that type work.
Yeah, and there's other, um, programs, weatherization programs that the county has. One thing to think about as we talk about how to use these funds is, um, we want to try to use some of these funds for things that don't have programs already in place, um, so we get the biggest bang for the buck. There's going to be some things that there's other programs, like John was just talking about. Um, so do we want to, you know, double up on that, or do we want to try to leverage these funds for something that, um, has no other source of funding? Um, so that's, that's another way to kind of look at some of these things.
Let me just read you a comment. I mean, I, I don't want to get off track here, but, uh, you know, this is from, uh, I guess the league, it says, uh, um, "The American Rescue Plan will bring 1.3 billion to North Carolina cities and towns and includes a broad mandate to allow investments in water and sewer infrastructures." Uh, and it goes on to talk about, uh, local governments, uh, needing to think about this as sort of a transformational kind of time and monies to be used. And so, um, I, I'm, I'm not sure I have, uh, you know, the, 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 the best ideas, but if we're thinking about it as being transformational, we need to think, uh, broadly, and we need to think, uh, I guess, uh, with, with vision here. And again, I know we're talking about the limitations of what we can use it for, but, um, with, uh, you know, with the amount of money we're receiving, it does, it should allow us to, uh, to do some, uh, meaningful things that can have both short-term and long-term impact, positive impact on some of our citizens. Um, anyway, I realize that's a pretty general statement. Anybody else with a second time around for Rodney in this presentation?
Would it be, as a follow-up, I think I heard two things that are fairly, fairly actionable right now that we could at least gather and bring back. One would be some examples of, and possibly some thoughts on a scope for an afford, a housing affordability study and inventory. Um, and then I also heard at least one person mention, um, the small pipe study, which, you know, we, we have bond funds that can fund the infrastructure, but we wouldn't want to fund the study through bond funds. So if, if council thinks that it's, if, if you're okay with those two things, those are two things that staff can take some immediate action to start work on and bring back information for your review, if that would be acceptable with everyone.
Thumbs up on that, council? Okay. Yeah, John?
And if anyone has examples of those type reports or anything that you've seen, I mentioned several municipalities will have all those, but if you've seen one in another area or, or, or want to draw attention to some particular point that was in even one of the local studies, please don't hesitate to mark that up and forward it on to us so that we can get everyone's perspectives on that.
Okay. Go ahead.
Does anyone see anything on the list that you would say, no, we don't, we don't want to spend our money on that? Um, I mean, you know this can change, but is there anything that, you know, you think is off... is off-base here that we shouldn't even be considering?
What was surface water protection again?
Well, that could be used to acquire property to protect water, water quality. So wetlands.
Current or future land that the town may, may have access to that might directly or indirectly protect the water source.
I assumed it was something like that, but I, you know, it happens in your system. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Have we satisfied that one for now? You, you finished?
Yes, thank you. Yep, we'll definitely have more discussion on this later, and we'll work on getting those other two things kind of rolling forward and keep our eyes and ears open for the finalization of the guidelines, so.
Okay, council, by my calculation, we have one other item from our town attorney on a matter that needs some attention. Things change over time, so, Ms. Jones, I recognize you for decriminalization of certain ordinances.
Thank you. As I, just want to make sure our police representatives have hung in there with us.
Yeah, they're here.
As I previewed to you the Criminal Justice Reform Act, which was adopted this year, was an omnibus bill covering a lot of different areas of criminal justice issues, but in particular, how it affects the town of Garner is that it changed the presumption that violations of town ordinances are automatically criminal, can be enforced as criminal misdemeanors. Now, the only way you can have a criminal penalty is to specifically state that in each ordinance. So right now, in the town's code of ordinance, there was this general in section 1-8, a general enforcement provision that said, any violation of this code, any ordinance contained therein is punishable as a misdemeanor. There are certain ordinances that also are implemented by the issuance of civil penalties, and for the most part, that the town is issuing civil penalties such as for animal control, for garbage, trash, solid waste issues, those kinds of violations, and collecting those. So in addition, what the bill does is it says there are certain areas where you can't adopt an ordinance that has a criminal enforcement component. And the biggest one is the zoning and planning regulations that are found in the Unified Development Ordinance in the UDO. So what we've done in, for that, is that they've posted on the town's webpage, within the planning pages, saying that effective tomorrow, violations of the UDO will not be punished as misdemeanors. Now, the town can still issue civil penalties and collect those, do things like stop work orders, other, you know, and pursue injunctive relief if necessary for that. The other one is regulation of taxis. So where you're required to have a license to operate a taxi, or required to have it inspected, those can't be punished criminally, but it does appear that, from my further research, people who evade the fair, jump out without paying, can still be charged criminally, because that's not regulating that particular business, that's regulating the behavior of people who use that business. So there, there's a couple of other areas that, for instance, like solar collectors, outdoor advertising, those were already part of the UDO, so we don't have to worry about them. But what I have done, if, in the memo that you saw attached in the agenda package, is a couple of provisions that, you know, are automatically changed by the application of the law going into effect tomorrow. There are several provisions in the ordinances that already said this is, this is punishable specifically as a misdemeanor. There are ones that just say it's prohibited, or it's unlawful to do something, and those have no specified criminal penalty. And then I think the last category, well, we have two other categories. Some ordinances were already, what I would call, decriminalized, where they say these aren't punishable as misdemeanors. And then there are other provisions that are already covered by state law. State law makes this a misdemeanor, and we don't actually have to duplicate it. Now, there was a time when a lot of local ordinances duplicated just because it was easier for enforcement, you know, personnel to implement that, and for the public to see that, you know, there was a consequence to that. So I've did some outreach to the department directors, haven't gotten a lot, a lot of feedback. Obviously, the police department has to deal with writing the criminal citations for any of these ordinances, so they're probably the most impacted. They have been reviewing this list, and will come up with a recommendation as to what they need to, or would like the opportunity to continue to have that criminal aspect. And interim chief Smith can elaborate on this, but for instance, the aggressive panhandling, loitering, some disruption at certain meetings, those are instances where it's somewhat beneficial to have the power to arrest someone, to remove them from that situation, even if they ultimately aren't convicted of that particular crime. But it allows for intervention in certain areas. You know, another example is, for instance, you know, interfering with a parade, or bringing a weapon, or dangerous animal to a parade. You want to be able to address that at the time and not just issue that, them a civil penalty that they have to pay in 30 days, or something like that. So there are some places where there'll be recommendations for, for things to be enforced criminally. And then we will specifically, I will bring back an ordinance to you with those specifically in that. Because under the new law, the ordinance has to be presented at one council meeting and then adopted at a subsequent council meeting, it would take a lot of research to go back and see how each of these provisions was adopted into the code, and whether there were two, what we call, two readings. And that's really not worth a time when we can just adopt a new ordinance that specifies it and not deal with the question about how were these adopted in the past. So that, that's the approach that a lot of other jurisdictions have done, is that they've just kind of re-adopted some of these provisions that already have the criminal misdemeanor element to it. Since we had this general, everything's punishable as a misdemeanor, you know, my suggestion at this point would be to say, you know, to confirm that it's only punishable as a misdemeanor criminally if it's specifically stated in another part of the code, and take that general enforcement provision and provide for the issuance of civil penalties under the direction of the town manager. So for instance, and that way, we don't have to worry about every instance of the code where it says this is prohibited, or this is unlawful. There would be the ability to issue a civil penalty. The benefit to having those parts decriminalized is that there's no then duty to turn any proceeds of the collection of those fines or penalties over to the school board. Now, it's my understanding that recently, the town of Garner has not been transmitting any money. It's, it's complex to look at what has to be transmitted and what doesn't, and it also has to do with how much we collect. And it's not, my understanding that we're not collecting a huge amount of any type of civil penalties. Obviously, if someone's charged as a misdemeanor and they have to pay the court fine, that's going directly to the court. That's not necessarily coming to the town of Garner. So I had asked at, I guess, our last meeting, you know, to think about your philosophy on criminal enforcement of, of these local ordinances. Again, there's a certain segment of the population that may be willing to, to pay a fine, but when they hear that there's potential jail time or incarceration and going to court, that has a deterrent effect. But it's not a tool that's very often used, in my understanding, from, by the town. And even if it is used, it's less prosecuted by the district attorney than many other, other crimes. They, you know, it's not a high priority when someone violates a local ordinance to have those prosecuted, as it is when they violate a state law, or what you would think of as your, your typical crimes. So tonight, I'd be looking for your feedback, either, or to answer any questions on any of these provisions that are specifically outlined in that. The next step would be for staff to draft a proposed ordinance of what staff would recommend to be enforced criminally. And again, this, switching this from everything's a criminal, punishable as a criminal misdemeanor to everything might be punishable by the issuance of a civil penalty. And then to bring that to you at your meeting on December 21st for the first reading, and then back possibly on January 3rd for the adoption. That leaves about a month of, a little over a month of somewhat uncertainty in that. And in an effort to alleviate that, an email has gone out to the Garner Police Department officers, explaining to them that there'd be no criminal penalty enforcement of local ordinance violations until further notice, that they would issue warnings in the meantime. That's in an effort not to give complete amnesty, that you can break any town ordinance in the meantime, but in order to comply with the law and not to unnecessarily be issuing criminal misdemeanors that are just going to get tossed out of court. We wanted to limit that. So I'd ask for your feedback, and as I said, Chief Smith is here, if you have any questions, particularly how that impacts, and Mr. Beck is, is here also regarding the amount, you know, our current approach with collecting civil penalties.
Okay, so I have a couple of questions or comments. Number one, dude, I understood you'd say, Ms. Jones, that the, sort of the police department would have an opportunity to weigh in on this decriminalization process and, and some of the recommendations that they would make, right? Before we get to a, a final decision on some of these things. Number two, the information that they have now, you're satisfied, is, is clear to the officer on the street in terms of how and when they should issue a citation during this interim period of time? Is that right? Would, did I say that correctly?
I would defer to Captain Smith on that.
Okay, could you come up, ma'am, to?
I'm sorry, Chief Smith.
Yeah, okay.
Yes, sir, that's correct. We sent out information this afternoon, and we're also meeting with them in person to reinforce the email that was sent out, to make them aware that they are not to be enforcing misdemeanor town ordinances, through misdemeanors until further notice.
Okay. And I promise not to lead us down a Pramrose path here with the one final question. In looking through these, these numerous violations in ordinances and so forth, I was trying to decide where littering streets and other town property fits currently. Is that considered to be a misdemeanor now? And under new provision, that's section 1111 under 47, and it's on page 140 of my book here. But, and the main reason I ask that is, obviously, we have received any number of inquiries and complaints about the fact that our, that our town is a trashy town. But at any rate, I'm just curious to know, is it, is that considered a misdemeanor at the present time?
So today, it's a misdemeanor. Tomorrow, we're not allowed to enforce that as a misdemeanor.
Okay, that's.
So it's, in that particular provision, it doesn't, it doesn't say, if you prohibit this, you're subject to, to a misdemeanor. Now, if, if you feel strongly, we can certainly add that language in to any of those that are in, what I have is that section C, where there's not a specified criminal penalty at this point.
Yeah. Well, now, hasty and dead, I'm not looking to do anything that makes it onerous on our police department to try to, you know, arrest or cite people for, for offenses that are difficult to, to prosecute. But at any rate, given the concerns and complaints we've had, if there's any way to, to tighten that up and to make that something that perhaps would encourage people to not engage in that kind of behavior, I would in favor of something to, to, to strengthen that, I guess, I'd say. That's just a general comment. There, there are a lot of things in here to consider. Council, anybody feel, I, I'll let them ask a question if they want to.
You mentioned littering. Of course, I think we've got state law on littering. Does that override Garner? So if, if any of our officers going down the road, and all of a sudden somebody throws a whole Bojangles' bag out the window on Highway 70 or on Van Dore Springs Road, our police can't stop them, or?
Some of the things that we have covered in our ordinances are also enforceable under state statute. And Captain McKeever and myself went through this morning and did a preliminary run-through of section C to look at some of the things that we current, that currently have civil penalties and also are enforced criminally. And we are prepared to make a recommendation either by the end of, maybe this week or early next week, to Ms. Jones as to what we would recommend to keep as criminal penalties.
So we're kind of getting a little bit ahead of it. Do we get all that feedback, it sounds?
I think more or less looking for guidance from you guys as to what you want us to do and how to proceed.
So clearly, if there's a state law, it can be, continue to be enforced. If there's a, a parallel state law provision, the officers just have to be careful that they're citing the state law rather than the local ordinance at this time.
Well, I'm satisfied that we'll get some good feedback from our police department on this matter. Confident of that. And there may be, I mean, I've, I've looked through it, did a quick pass-through, but, you know, sometimes it might be easy to say, well, definitely we ought to have, that is something punishable by misdemeanor, but then when you think it through the process, you may come up with a different conclusion, I guess.
I'll tell you one of the, we, we just ran some preliminary data later this afternoon. One of our biggest issues that we deal with is aggressive panhandling and begging, and the ordinance allows us to enforce that through misdemeanor, and it has more bite to it as a deterrent. And just some of the numbers that we ran, we looked at our data from January of 19 to current, and we've had 284 calls for service, made 20 arrests, and issued 24 warnings just for that offense alone. So there is a need for some continuance of misdemeanor enforcement.
I remember when we put that panhandling, Gray and I were on the board when we did that, because those people were standing at corners in roads and terrifying to women, and families trying to get out and go shopping, and that was a big one. And definitely want to keep that one enforced, absolutely.
Well, and I didn't intend to, I guess, get us off on our discussion where we're going through each individual one, that, that's not what this is intended for tonight, I'm sure. But the list, I guess the list is pretty all-encompassing that we have in our agenda packet, is that right? That we're, that we're considering?
Yes, to the best of my research abilities, that's, following on what former town attorney Bill Anderson and his son had done a couple of years ago, and then, then updating that. But yes, if you, if there's particular things on this list, and you can let us know, I will tell you, for example, the town of Apex just did a, like, 66-page ordinance that basically turned everything into crim, well, I don't know how much they had before that, but, I mean, they took, like, almost every provision that they currently had where they said it was prohibited or unlawful, and added this sentence that it's punishable as a misdemeanor.
Could speak on that. That would be my recommendation. Go back to the date, broke, don't fix it. It sounds like somebody was trying to absolve a certain group of people from being criminally liable for certain things related to town. liable for certain things related to towns, and just this blanket thing happened. You should just add punishable as misdemeanor to every single one of these, and, because that's the way it is now. I mean, that's the way it's, it's just written in a one sentence. I think you just go through, and then, like, we trust our police department to be reasonable when they're enforcing the law on whether they're going to give a warning, or a penalty, or whatever. We can't tie the hands of the police department when somebody's driving on the sidewalk and then say, oh, I'm sorry, that's a $100 fine. Like, that's absurd. So, I, I like the approach Apex took, just, it shall be punishable as misdemeanor. Every single one, just call it a day. I do have a question on the limitations on civil penalties, however. And my question is, is that, what is the limitation, if there is one? And does it have to be done by policy or ordinance? Or can it be done as an ordinance that cites a policy?
So, for civil penalties, there's not the same kind of limit there is for criminal penalties. So, criminal penalties, there's a default of $50 and less than 30 days, but you can go up to $500. But you'd have to specifically say that this is punishable. You could also go down to $25, but you would have to specifically state that. There's not necessarily the same thing for civil penalties. There's a good argument for, if your civil penalties aren't generating an excessive amount of income or revenue for the town, but really are paying for the salary of that enforcement officer to investigate, to provide notice, to answer, you know, complaints, then, then that can kind of be funneled back in to that program. And there are certain ordinances, such as minimum housing, where you're supposed to do an accounting every year to say, how much are you collecting? And is that being put back into minimum housing-type programs? There's a few state statutes that require that. So, there's not necessarily the limit, but, on civil penalties, but when you get to excessive civil penalties, they become punitive in nature, and then that's when this clear proceeds to the school board really apply, that even though they might, you might not say it's criminal, it still has a criminal component because it's, it's far exceeds the resources put into enforcement. Now, the few jurisdictions where I work where they've kind of audited the enforcement programs, you, you never collect enough to pay for that vehicle, to pay for a cellphone, you know, the time for the officer to go out and do this, that, if there's any hearing requirements, those kinds of things, just the documentation that's required where you have a very robust enforcement program.
I mean, I guess it would make sense in parallel with this for us to look at our penalty schedule and make sure that it's in line with what, I mean, there's a difference, it, it should be, it should discourage behaviors without being punitive. There's a fine line in there somewhere where somebody said, well, it's only a $500 fine, I'll do it anyway and pay the fine. We see a lot of that, and so we might want to, as an exercise, and again, does that have to be a matter of ordinance, or is that a policy decision?
The setting of any type of civil penalty would have to be adopted as an ordinance. And, you know, there's, there's two approaches to that. You could have an escalating penalty, whereas the first offense is this, and then if it recurs in a, in a year, or five years, or something like that, then it, it increases each time. There's also some ordinances where, once you're assessed a civil penalty, if you don't pay that within a certain amount of time, it doubles. That's more of a collection, an incentive to collect it. But there are different ways of, of structuring your civil penalty approach. And then I think, as I mentioned before, you can also think about what level of due process you want to provide for civil penalties. Civil penalties don't require the same amount as criminal penalties because of the incarceration effect, so that, you know, there is the due process, that misdemeanors have to go to district court, where there is an opportunity to have that, that due process or appellate-type procedure.
I think the timeframe for, for this is faster than the evaluation of the civil penalties, but I think we, that should be sort of the, the starting point for that discussion, is to, for us to analyze our, our schedule for those civil penalties and see if they're sufficient, adequate, up-to-date, and all that kind of stuff, so.
Okay. Any other council members have questions or comments?
Just essentially reading through all of them.
Yeah.
And as Captain Smith mentioned, excuse me, Chief Smith, I apologize, about the begging and soliciting and so forth and how, but we've had 280-plus calls the last two-plus years, so we need to pay attention to that. It's got, the word of the night is in there, right in there under section, that's 9-41, right above that, that's 940, itinerant, word of the night. I had to look that one up to make sure I understood what it, what it meant. Also, I think we'll, we'll see what y'all come back with and recommendations. What Damian suggested also is, certainly sounds reasonable, and I think, of course, there's some of these that we're gonna, you're going to eliminate due to the fact of the change in the state law, so whatever y'all bring back, we'll certainly pay attention to, because you know more about it than we do.
Anything else here? Okay. The information is helpful. I appreciate you bringing it to our attention, and at, at this point, I don't know if you feel like you need more guidance, or just the discussion in general has been helpful, of course.
I think this discussion's been helpful. Said, work with the police department to bring back an ordinance. We'll also recirculate that again to the department directors to make sure that they're comfortable with that recommendation. But, again, if you look at the list and feel strongly one way or another, feel free to email me that, and we can incorporate that into the draft. But it, it'll likely be an extensive ordinance, just because you can see, that's just a summary of, of the page, you know, of all of the places in the code. And again, all of this can be revisited in the future as we find out. You know, my experience has been, if people pay a fine very readily, the fine is either too low, and when they're appealing it, maybe the fine is too high. And there's potentially that place where there is the adequate deterrent effect where you don't have to, you know, then they just comply without facing that potential penalty. But that's hard to determine, and it's certainly, one size doesn't necessarily fit all for the, the types of, of different kinds of violations and their impact on other members of the public and property and those kinds of issues.
Okay. I'm reading the last sentence there. The draft orders be presented at future meeting for consideration, then presented again at a subsequent meeting for adoption. That's the plan going forward, is that right?
So, so right now, the plan is to present it to you at the December 21st meeting. My understanding is, right now, that might be a light meeting, so there'll be plenty of time for discussion. And then, you know, if, if you're comfortable with that draft at that meeting, we can come back at that first meeting in January to have it adopted. None of these particular ordinance revisions would require a public hearing, but if you want to have it on the, a public hearing to get, you know, input from the public, certainly, we can certainly put it on the agenda for that. But we're not required to have a public hearing or to do public notice that you would say for a zoning text amendment to the, the UDO.
My initial inclination would be maybe to have a public hearing just to give that opportunity, but I may rethink that, and we'll, we'll hear from you further on that. Okay, counsel, if you're satisfied with this presentation and you have no other questions, we'll move on to the next item. Thank you very much, Ms. Jones. Okay, I, I know our town manager had to leave, apparently, there are items one and two. Are you prepared, John, to?
Yes, sir, I'll be glad to cover those for the manager. You do have in your packet the pending agenda for the months of December and January. Absent from that are the two, the two occurrences of the item that Ms. Jones just mentioned. We did not know the, the schedule outcome of that when we prepared that for your packet. The other thing that is not on there that would likely happen within that two-month period, though, is counsel reviewing the Phase 1 cost estimates for the two parks that we're working on. And I believe at a previous meeting, the last one or a previous one, counsel had indicated, Mr. Dickerson, that your preference would be to continue those in a special called meeting format versus waiting to add those to a work session. When we have those ready for you, we will reach out and get dates from you that works for everyone. There was also some discussion, whether formally or informally, about it that same time, maybe just having some discussion about where we are with the bond projects that are already in progress now that the bond referendum has passed. So, we will, if it pleases the council, we'll just try to cover those in the same called meeting, and we'll get back in touch with you for opportunities to meet once the, the cost estimates are ready. The second item on the list is the proposed council meeting schedule for 2022. I will call your attention to two deviations from the typical rhythm of our meeting schedule. The February 28th work session will be scheduled on Monday. The last day of that month falls on a Monday, so the way the short month works, that Monday night was selected for the work session. And also, the September 22nd meeting is a Thursday. Counsel has always been gracious enough to allow us to move one meeting a year to allow the manager's office to attend our international conference, and making the assumption that we're able to travel for that this year, this coming year, we went ahead and scheduled that on that Thursday of that week in September. So, those are the two deviations from our typical schedule. And I believe, although this was under manager reports tonight, there was a request for action on that. So, if it pleases the council tonight, if anyone would care to take action on it, this would be Resolution 2021-4272.
Okay, I think it's reasonable, counsel, to go ahead and, and actually to approve this, but I'll hear from you on this. You've had a chance, the schedule has, has basically remained the same with the deviations that Mr. Hodges mentioned there, that we've done before.
I believe we adopt Resolution 2021-2472.
Motion made and seconded. Any conversation, hearing none. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition, no. And it is so ordered.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, one other thing that's not on your agenda tonight is just a recap of some upcoming events as we approach the holidays. First, a, a thank you to both Downtown Garner Association Board, staff, as well as Parks staff who helped prepare for, and helped us plan for the, the tree lighting ceremony that was done in conjunction with the night market this past weekend. Thank you to all of you who could be in attendance there. It was a deviation from our typical events, but I think it was a, a nice event, and we thank you to everyone who was there, and also the staff who were not there but helped us prepare for that. We also will be having this weekend the Holiday Block Party. This is the new event that will be held on the first Saturday of the month going forward, we hope. This will be at the Garner Recreation Center campus from 3:00 to 5:00 p.m. We also have a NHT Showtime performance by the Neuse River Big Band on Thursday, December 16th at 8:00 p.m. This is swing music and holiday classics at the G-PAC. We do have Garner Rec Center registration programs with holiday themes. First is going to be the Family Candy Cane Hunt on the 11th from 1:00 to 3:00. This is $7 for resident family and $10 for non-resident. And this is actually a, a program we've done before, but not at this location. It's a combined art opportunity as well as a scavenger hunt, and it was very well received in previous years. There's a large candy cane poster that the families get to decorate, and then they go out and scavenger hunt is to get pieces to put on their, their poster that they made. We will have Cookies and Cocoa with Santa on Friday, December 17th from 5:30 to 7:30. Pre-registration is required, and there'll be crafts, cocoa, and photos with Santa, and that registration can be found at garner.recdesk, R-E-C-D-E-S-K dot com. Our Garner Senior Center Holiday Party will be on Thursday, December 16th from 4:30 to 7:30. We are limiting this to 50 participants due to social distancing. And the Garner Senior Center's annual American Cross, American Red Cross Blood Drive is going to be on Friday, December 17th from 10:00 to 2:30. And you can register on the American Red Cross's registration page. If you've not used that, we can forward a link out to you. And if you've not heard, you probably have, but Red Cross is in dire need, desperate situation for blood right now. So, if anyone listening is able to go out in there, please go to that or one of the other blood drives that's being held. The other related events, the Art Around Town reception for the artists will be tomorrow night, Wednesday, December 1st, 6:00 p.m. I believe until 8:00, and that's on the stage of the Garner Performing Arts Center. You'll have an opportunity to meet the artists. And also, the auction, the online auction for the art is open through Friday evening. I think it closes at 8:00 p.m. Please go out and take a look at some amazing art that our artists did, and a great program that DGA put on in partnership with, with Parks, Rec, and Cultural Resources. But please go out and, and bid on art if you're, if you would like to. Would make a great opportunity for some of our local businesses to bid on that and showcase it in their businesses or in their offices. And there is going to be a, a partner production. The Eric Swindell Productions performance of the play An Unexpected Christmas will be at G-PAC on Saturday, the 18th. Two performances, one at 3:00 and one at 7:00. And all that information comes to us by way of, of our Parks Recreation, Recreation Director who sent that along for the manager to provide to you.
Thank you, Mr. Hodges. A lot of activities going on, and hopefully, everybody can find one that fits their interests sure enough, so.
Just don't forget our parade. You got that, okay?
Yeah, he's going to get to that with council reports, I guess. So, that's the next item on our agenda. So, I will start, Mr. Matthews, with you. Any council reports?
I know, so just, it was a cold Friday night, but it was good for the crowd, turned out and seen Santa Claus, and, and the five-minute, five-second tree lighting was successful, and I think a good time was held by all. It was cold, but a good way to wind down. That was, that's all I had.
Beautiful, big tree with lots of lights, yeah. A lot of pictures being taken there in front of the tree. Mr. Stinklin?
Yes. I spoke with Mr. Johnson and asked him if he could give us some information on the New Bethel Road Bridge, which has been under construction for some time. And they got us back, he sent me back an email with the information that they hope that the temporary bridge will be finished by March of 2022, and then they will work on the permanent bridge. I cannot remember that timeframe exactly, but it is some, some time. And then, my question after that was, you know, we paid for that to have sidewalk accessibility on both sides of the bridge. Would they connect the missing link between Sutton Springs and the link up there to Centennial Park? And we're told that they would. So, once that bridge is completed, there'll be a continued sidewalk from Centennial Park all the way up to the existing sidewalk of Sutton Springs. So, at least that gets us further down the road, and we'll decide about other sidewalks later, but at least the folks will be able to have a starting point to get to the park, which I think was one thing we focused on with sidewalks. But anyway, I appreciate Mr. Johnson giving that information. He did say that they had, I think, some utility issues and also some product issues that they're having on the bridge, getting what they need for completion. But anyway, they hope to have the temporary bridge completed by March 2022, so that's a start. I appreciate him getting that information. That's all.
That's not too far away in the scheme of things, so that is.
Four months.
It was originally going to be done before the high school opened, but it, and then.
Seven years ago.
We've had some other delays on things at times.
Yes, sir.
That, yeah. Ms. Behringer, report.
One thing I have a question, maybe Mr. Hodges can answer it. Can we're having a retreat?
Prelimarily planning to have one in mid-February with, with no definitive yet, but actually rolled out the budget. Had discussions with the department head team yesterday about wanting to do that on the, the schedule that we used to do, whereby we'd have enough time after a council retreat in mid-February to allow a week or so of budget adjustments if anything's needed from council input. So, in general terms, targeting mid-February. We've not looked ahead at any particular dates, but we'll be doing that and getting input from council soon.
Okay. Mr. Dellinger?
Yeah, just want to thank the Chamber and Rotary and the Downtown Garner Association and the Garner Economic Development Corporation. We went to the Garner Launch Graduation. There were several of us up here who attended that over at the, what was it called, the?
Rand Bryan House.
Rand Bryan House. That was a couple of weeks ago, and I think it was 16 businesses, was it 16 businesses? And their owners who had graduated from this 10-week program that these partners in the community funded and worked partnered with Wake Tech. community funded and worked partnered with Wake Tech. And the energy in that room and the level of accomplishment and the gratitude from those business owners that the town and these partners put that together was amazing. They were so thankful, and they were so creative and so energetic. So, just hats off to Joe Stallings and Mari Howe and Mr. Hodges, too, who I'm sure had a hand in some of that, for putting that together and doing that in Garner. I'm looking forward to the next group of folks that sign up. I think we had to turn people away. We're not sure we'd have anyone sign up, but we had to turn a lot of people away, Joe said. So, it was just a great, it was a great night. The parade is December 18th, 9:30 a.m. We have almost 40 entrants, not including some town entrants. We're thankful to the police department for their assistance. We have a volunteer meeting this Sunday, our second one. We have over a dozen volunteers, and the police will be helping them keep, you know, be safety-minded and all that as they sort of do volunteer activities throughout the day. Also, thanks to Fire and Rescue. Kim has been really wonderful in helping us plan that, and Shannon Mitchell and Rachel Tudo as well. So, it's going to be great. We've got a couple of bands, we've got choral groups, we've got dance groups, all of them. The furthest non-Garner one is Southeast Raleigh High School. Their marching band will be in the parade, so we're looking forward to it, all coming together. It'll be just on Main Street this year, which will be a little different, but we're really excited about that. The only other thing that I have is I was driving down Joan Sausage and saw a lot of activity on Calabar, and I was just curious as to what's going on on Calabar. There's sort of like clearing and stuff, which I guess they're probably allowed to do, but I didn't know if we had an update on anything that was going on over there on Calabar, this corner portion.
I believe it is clearing and access to get to the development that's being done there. Some of the staging for some of their equipment is there on Calabar. I was out with actually one of the residents, Ms. Scott, from the neighborhood, and I met with a representative from Amazon a week and a half ago or so on-site, and we did talk to some of the folks that were there with the construction group. So, I think that everything that they were doing there, that the neighborhood had been aware of and knew the situation that was, that they were working there. But we were meeting with them, I'm sorry, this is a little aside from your question, but related to the neighborhood. We did meet with them about some questions about some of the truck access, and Amazon does have an engineering group coming out in January to study the traffic flow within their facility parking, and we hope that may change some of the things that were concerning to the neighbors. There is an exit on the northern end of Amazon that is being used for employees only to exit while they've got extra peak staff, extra staff during peak time, so that's helping some with eliminating some traffic coming out at the main intersection. So, I'm sorry I deviated from your question slightly, but same interested folks, I think.
Yeah, and it's good to see, at least for now, that they've blocked off those trees on that corner, that sort of that main entrance, and that was good to see. Hopefully, those will stay there, so that's all I've got. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Van.
Well, everything's been said in reference to what I was going to say in reference to the parade and the event at the Rand Bryan House, so I have nothing to add tonight.
Okay. Thank you, sir. And I don't have a report tonight. I will ask council before we adjourn, there had been some discussion as a follow-up to a previous meeting as to whether or not you wanted to ask for a closed session to maybe finalize a personnel issue. You see the time, and if you want to do that, we can get a motion available to do it. Otherwise, I think we would need to wait until our Monday meeting without calling a special meeting, so. What's your pleasure?
I do have that popped over my phone. Excuse me.
So, yeah, do you want to do a closed session? All right, a motion made by Mr. Dellinger.
Gray has the citation.
Excuse me, yeah, okay. He's finding it now, I believe.
I'm at the bottom of the agenda, my bad.
Yeah, yeah, we will do that. We'll take a brief recess just before, I guess, so we go into our closed session, but we can.
You want that citation?
Yeah.
It's General Statute 143-31811, subsection A6.
That's fine. That's it.
All right. So, motion made and probably seconded, okay. All right, council, if you favor that motion, would you vote aye?
Aye.
Okay. I'm going to declare a brief recess for about five to 10 minutes, and then we will go into closed session from there, okay? And I guess we'll meet in the, do you want to meet in the? Oh, we can meet in here again.
Do either one.
Yeah, okay. All right. Okay, the council is back in open session, having gone into closed session in regards to a personnel manner and evaluation, and we completed that one-item business, and we are now, are back in open session. And I will now entertain a motion that we adjourn.
Second.
Motion made properly and seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And it is unanimous, and I declare this work session of the town council to be concluded, and we will adjourn.[1754.63][1754.63]